Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting for the Daily City Library Board of Trustees for Tuesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I call the meeting to order. Shall we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. May we have the roll call, please?
You certainly may, President Devera. Trustee Lex?
Present.
Trustee Balmeo?
Present.
Vice President Logarta?
Present.
And President Devera?
Present. Okay, and I hope that everyone had a chance to review tonight's agenda. So if there are no updates, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. And for the minutes from our last meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-first of August, two thousand and eighteen, is there a motion to move?
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of August twenty-first.
And who shall second the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I just want to take a moment to welcome Marcel Balmeo. Congratulations for joining us on the Board of Trustees for the Daily City Library. On behalf of myself, Bill Lex, Lynn Shubanka, who's not here this evening, Angela Logarta, Jayla Anderson, and Joseph Krenn, I want to welcome you, and I look forward to your interests and commitment and engagement with the board and with the members here. But I also am looking forward to you working with our community and sustaining our libraries here at Daily City. So I'm really excited about that. We've had a chance to kind of meet on one-on-one and kind of get some ideas about your thoughts about libraries and moving forward and how we can better our community. And I'm very excited to be able to work with you on that.
Me too. Thank you.
Welcome. And with that said, I'd like to open the floor to you. If you'd like to take a moment and give us a brief background about yourself and your interest in the libraries and sitting on the board.
Yes, by the way, my business, I started with a childcare. That was two thousand and eleven, and we serve hundreds of children already in the facility. And my wife is a teacher, so, and that's her passion of helping kids, you know. And we help a lot of families, you know, because here, you know, a lot of kids out there and a lot of families, they need help, okay? So, but, and also, I do have also a financial service, which is I do help a lot, you know, or hundreds of clients serving with, you know, community. I cater for all ages. And recently, I serve a lot of, you know, seniors and helping the health insurance needs, okay? And also, I recently, I'm managing partner, one of the Filipino internet radio. So what we do is basically, it's, we're the only public service internet radio that we cater Filipino community. So, and we, you know, we disseminate information, thousands, thousands of, you know, clients or in the community, so by providing this internet radio. Because nowadays, I believe, you know, because of the technology, this is the fastest, you know, dissemination of information by using social media. So, and that's why we are, you know, proud of, you know, giving this service to the community. So, yeah, and now, you know, being as a trustee, a board of trustees in libraries, so now I will be extending my service to the community, which is I've been doing this for the last, I would say, I've been licensed two thousand and six. So I serve a lot of, you know, clients, so helping the community. So now I will, you know, I'm willing to, you know, help a lot of, you know, people and also working, I love working with, you know, with you. So, you know, it's the first time, so of course, I'm like a baby, right? Recall. And I'm willing to learn, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Yeah, can you tell us, are you from Daily City? Or how long have you lived in this area?
Yes, I came here in two thousand, okay? So originally, I came from Guam and moved here with nobody, you know? Yes, uh-huh. And then I finally decided to stay here in Daily City. And now this is like my home. So, and I love, you know, number one is what, the weather? Right? And also the people, you know, because here, and I see a lot of, you know, you know, Filipinos here, and I love helping, you know, you know, people, so, yeah.
And what are the names of your businesses?
I, my, the name of my childcare is Saint Mary Family Daycare. And for the financial service, it's MB Financial and Insurance Services. And, you know, recently, I'm part of where the, we call the name of a film radio. This is the internet radio.
Right, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Marcel? We're putting you on the spot. Thanks, Marcel, for sharing, appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, so we will now move to the agenda, and we can go into the Director's Report. So if we want to start off with the Summer Learning two thousand and eighteen review?
That's where we're going to start. And it's my pleasure to welcome back for an encore performance Ms. Sarah Spence, who's diligently put together a wonderful summer learning program in this past summer.
Of course. Is there enough for all of us, or maybe you can share? I'll pass it down. Thanks.
I just had my first summer learning experience with Daily City. So I have put together a presentation, so you can see what we did, which was a lot. So, let's move to the next. So the first slide is, what is summer learning? So, summer learning is different in different library systems. In Daily City, what we consider summer learning is signing up for summer learning. So getting a reading log. And what's great about Daily City is when you sign up for summer learning, you get a free book just for signing up. So we had a lot of fun giving out free books this summer. We really want to stress that reading for enjoyment is what summer learning is about. Kids have all year to read on their level, to be forced to read certain books. And this is a time for them to have fun, and we really want to emphasize that. So we have a lot of library programs, which I'll talk about. So coming to library programs, participating in weekly raffles. San Mateo County gives us prizes for weekly raffles, and I'll talk about that a little bit. Utilizing library resources and completing the bonus challenge card. So we had something different this year, which is, we called it a bonus challenge card. And it had a bunch of different activities that you could do in not just finishing the summer learning program, doing the reading log, but coming to library programs, using library resources, using the self-checkout, taking a picture in a park, just different things that they could do. And when they were eight, when they finished that, they got a movie ticket. So it was a little bit more challenging. In the past, we just have given them a movie ticket for finishing the reading program the first time. So this was just a little extra. And then we had three summer learning celebrations at the end of summer at three of our branches. So that's the overall of what summer learning was. So these are just some of the great pictures from summer learning. And we had a lot, we had a lot of fun, so so much learning fun this summer. So why is summer learning important? We want children, well, as a librarian, it's very important for me that children get to pick what they read. And so when children select their reading materials and they get to read for enjoyment, they receive the most gains in reading achievement, including better reading comprehension, writing style, vocabulary, spelling, and grammatical development. So that's just some of the research done on letting kids pick what they want to read. And that's definitely what summer is about. We also want this to be a time for families to read together. Daily City also has a family, well, a family summer learning program. So we have it for children, teens, and adults, which is very important. So children are more likely to become lifelong readers if they see the adults in their lives reading. So we want to really encourage parents to be reading with their children. And then a hundred percent of students experience summer learning loss if they don't engage in educational activities over the summer. So there's something called the summer slides that is very well-known that when children don't do any reading or any activities over the summer, then they end up losing a lot of what they learned over the year. So that is a very important part of summer learning for us, is making sure that kids stay where they were or hopefully continue to grow over the summer. Okay, so what we did, thirty-six outreach events this summer. And this was done by Jonathan Siu, the Recreator, and myself. So the two of us did thirty-six outreach. So I'm pretty proud of that. We went to all the Daily City and Bayshore Public Schools. And we went to a couple of the private schools, OLM, OLPH, and Hildale School. We did some summer family, or school family and literacy nights, recreations, family reading night. We went to the farmer's market twice, Midway Village Child Care and Housing, Ceremony Head Start, the Health and Safety Fair, and the National Night Out, and then also two of the Big Lift sites. So that was, that was fun. Our library programs, this is a huge number. We had ninety-one total programs in the library. So that was June, July, and August for three months. We did ninety-one programs. Eighty-one of them were programs, summer programs and storytimes. And then I put who, how many people attended those. We did seven pop-up programs, so this was, I think we've done this in the past. But we tried to do a few more of them this year, which is kind of like special programs that people weren't expecting. And they weren't in our calendar or, well, we did post it online, but they didn't know about them. And then, so it would just be like a spur of the moment. That week, we'd post it, oh, we're going to have a special button-making program at Ceremony at two o'clock on Monday or whatever. And so we had, we had good attendance for those last-minute programs. And that was just for people that maybe, a lot of the people that came didn't even know about the program. So they were just coming into the library, and maybe they didn't know that we offered programs. And we had some people from REC come over from the clubhouse. And so it was, it was a great time. We also had three performers. And we had the Bay Area Discovery Museum. Marilla Herrera is a musician, so she did music on a storytime, and then extreme science magic. So those were our performances this summer. So we are part of San Mateo County, the PLS system, and they help us a lot. So what they provide over the summer is weekly raffle prizes for each library location. So all four of our branches get these prizes. And there's a little bit of a, you can see some of the prizes, like Giants tickets. Well, that's San Jose, that's San Jose Giants that we related get, like San Francisco Giants tickets too. We got Exploratorium, the Tech Museum. So there's just a bunch of different museum passes that people can win over the summer. And they also provided three teen interns and a lead intern for Daily City, and they're pictured right there. So they just spent the summer in the Daily City libraries, helping with summer learning. And they also provided about nine thousand books. You can see the picture of our hallway with the books. One side of the hoi. So that was, that was a great, great thing to have. And then also a thousand dollars for a scholarship winner. So that's what they provided. And some of our numbers for summer learning. We had six thousand four hundred and fifty-nine youth participate in summer learning this year. There were five hundred and sixty-seven completed it. And the bonus challenge card, which was a little extra thing, we had a hundred and forty-five kids complete that. And then weekly raffle entries, two thousand two hundred and thirty-one. So they could enter those raffles anytime they came into the library, so. Okay, so here are some comparisons for the last five years. So our signups were not up to par, the same as last year. So we had sixteen hundred and twenty-three in-house and four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six outreach programs. People completed, or not complete, I'm sorry, signed up. So it's a little bit down from last year, but I will explain as we go. And then completions also is down from last year. So five hundred and sixty-seven from one thousand two hundred and thirty-six. I'll explain. So these are the ages that did sign up. So you can see that K through five was our big, big age group that did signups. And under five and K, sixth through twelfth grade were about the same, seventeen percent. And then completions, the next one, not similar, K through five was the big age range. Under five was a little bit after, and then K, sixth through twelfth.
They're more challenging?
More challenging, definitely, to get them. We did go to the high schools and try to get the kids excited. And that's tough, that's challenging to get them to take, I mean, to take the books is one thing, but to actually have them do the reading over the summer, that was much challenging for older kids. But even with those little negatives, we had a lot of positive feedback from our community. So we did have surveys for the community to fill out after, after the programs. And it seemed like they liked, they liked our programs. Workshops were awesome, loved all workshop, kids enjoyed them all summer, thank you. Had a great time, thank you for the great activities, opportunities, and prizes. The library staff is so friendly, and they really make the library a welcoming place. You guys are cool. Our son had a great time at the end-of-summer library event. So those are just some of the pictures from the programs and the celebrations at the end. All right, so now, what was different this year? So there was, San Mateo County provided an online option called BeanStack. And so that was a way for people to sign up and complete without using the paper log. We did have some completions, I think, or some signups and completions, but there was a little bit of a problem because they were only allowed to do it one time online, whereas paper, you can do it as many times as you want. So I think that was kind of, it was hard to get people to do it online when they knew they could only do it one time online. So I think-
Can I ask a question about that? So when you say that they can only do it one time online versus in previous years, they were able to, they didn't have that option to do it online, they were submitting it and multiple times. So does that jive with the numbers as far as?
Yeah, I, um-
We count first time and then subsequent signups and completions separately. It just not, the BeanStack not being as fully functioning as the existing paper system made it something that just really didn't ever get fully integrated and implemented.
Okay.
So we did get some participation, but it, overall, I would say it was a, hopefully, it was a trial for something that will have better implemented in the future, yeah.
Yeah, so they could do it once online, and then if they wanted to continue, they could do the paper log. But it's just not as convenient, you know? If you're doing it online, and then you have to come back in to get a paper log, so.
Well, they get the option to do it multiple times online moving forward, now that we know that the issue is-
We're-
That's the goal.
Yeah.
It was, they were technical constraints.
Yes, of course, yeah.
And it got implemented very late. So, I mean, it was like right when we started.
It's kind of trial and error.
Yeah, yeah, so that was just, but it was something different. I mean, I think people would like it if they could do it more than just once.
I'm sure, yeah.
And then, so I talked about that we did the, we went to the Big Lift camps before. And we think that could have like really influenced our numbers this year because in the past, I think there were four.
There were, there were more camps.
There were more camps.
There were more participants, and-
It was a longer-
It was a longer period, so staff were able to get in there at the very beginning, sign them up, so they were added to our signups, they're kind of a captive audience. And then they also, during the course of the program, completed it. And then staff came and gave them their prizes and logged them as completing. And so that, that was a big part of our participation in prior years. That this year, because they had shortened it and reduced it due to budget reductions on their end, Sarah focused on getting them cards, which I think in the long run is a really valuable thing to do, but wasn't able to get in there in time to get them to start or to sign up initially. They did read, of course.
Can you clarify just for, for me even?
Yeah.
The Big Lift camps, can you, um?
So that's San Mateo County, right?
San Mateo County does run them, yeah.
Yeah, so they're like, it's kind of like a, a summer-
Oh, we did.
Yeah, thank you.
We actually had a wonderful presentation to the board, and maybe it's time to do it again. This initiative of San Mateo County, recognizing the fact that even though San Mateo County is one of the wealthiest places on the planet, children's reading levels, especially at the third grade, a huge percentage, I want to say about forty-six percent of third graders in San Mateo County were not reading at grade level. This was recognized as a major problem in the county. So the initiative started, and what they're really spending a lot of time, energy, and money on, mostly financed through Measure K, is early literacy, and they're starting at the preschool age and targeting areas where they know the reading levels are down most. And Daily City's got a couple of schools that are involved in the program. And the goal is to get, to get to these kids young in preschool, kindergarten, first, second grade, so that by the time they are in third grade, they're back up to level. So the goal is to get the literacy rate in San Mateo County, especially among third-grade readers, back up closer to a hundred percent, not below fifty percent. And the long-term effects of this, they've recognized over long-term states, kids that don't achieve reading level by third grade spend the rest of their academic career trying to catch up, and they never do. And in fact, in many cases, the gap widens as time progresses. So that's why it's such an important priority for San Mateo County, and that's how the Big Lift initiative started. And maybe we can, when it first kicked off, we had somebody from the County Board of Education make a very nice presentation on the whole thing. So maybe we can contact them again and do a refresher-
It would be nice.
And talk about the progress they've made, because they've had a few years now.
Yeah, it's always good to, I think, bring that back to the surface, not for us, but also for our patrons, so that they know and they're aware that, you know?
It would be interesting too to chart the progress they've made, because they've expended many years now of trying to catch up. So we'll see if the test results are showing anything. Specifically in Daily City, there are two schools, I believe, two, I'm getting hit on. Well, is it Woodrow Wilson and George Washington? No. Okay, anyway, there's two schools.
They're named after people.
There's two schools in Daily City specifically where they offer a free summer program. So where all the other camps, I see the naughty heads, anyone who has kids, camps can get really expensive over the summertime. But these are full day-long and fully funded by the camp. And it's based on, I think, income and reading scores and all that. But it's, again, it's focused for K to third grade.
It has a, an academic component, and then there's also sort of an enrichment piece.
That's good.
But they did, I believe, abbreviate the day slightly, and then they reduced it by one week due to budget constraints this year, so.
Yeah, they were all in a year ago.
Yeah.
But it sounds like they ratcheted it down a little bit.
Thanks for that, Joseph.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so when I did go to two of the schools to give library cards to the students that didn't have cards, and I did talk to one teacher, and he was very interested in next year, us coming at the beginning, so that even though it's a short four-week period, during that four weeks would be a good time for the teachers to be completing the reading program with the students. And so then that would be like a win-win for both of us. So that's what I am very interested in doing next year. We didn't know that we were going to be doing the cards. It just, it was like right at the end of their, their program, and just doing all these other outreach programs, we just literally didn't have time to do it. So that's definitely a priority for next year. Yeah. We also had the bonus challenge card option, and this might have also been an issue for our numbers just because we had different, different feedbacks. Some people thought it was too hard because we had them do, they had to do eight challenges. One of them had to be finishing a reading log. And so I, I'm not sure, we're going to evaluate it and see maybe about changing it in the future. But, so it wasn't, I don't know, people, maybe people weren't as excited about the prizes. They didn't get the movie ticket just for finishing, so we have to look at that for next year. And then another thing I did, I did try this year was I contacted the schools right when they started, just reminding the librarians to remind the kids that they still had a couple of weeks to turn in their log because it is kind of a weird timeframe. We go all the way to the end of August, so they have been in school for a couple of weeks. And a lot of kids don't remember, oh, I still have my reading log. So we tried to, we tried to get them to come in, and we did a little incentive for that as well for the last two weeks. If they, if they turned in a log, they would get entered into a raffle for a movie ticket. So, we just tried, we tried that, so. Okay, so who won the thousand-dollar scholarship? Emmett Smith won. Yeah, so he's six.
He's a millionaire now.
He was, he was very excited.
Literally gumming up in that.
Really? Yeah, I'd be excited too. Oh, yeah, when I called- When I called, um, the mo, oh, the mom and the dad are both teachers, so I was so happy. Um, but when I called to tell them, um, she said, I said, oh, your son Emmett won the thousand-dollar scholarship. And she, I knew she wasn't thinking, but she's like, shut up! And then she's like, wait, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that. She was so excited, so they came in right away. Um, so we're excited for him. So what's next? Um, so now we're gonna start planning for summer in November. So we don't have a lot of time. Um, but we do want to be looking at, at this summer, especially since this is my first summer. I haven't, I haven't done this before here, so this was really a good learning experience for me. But we wanna look at the programs, we wanna see what successes, um, logistics, ideas for improvement. Look at the attendance for the different programs. We are going to ask staff for input, and, uh, I'm gonna send out a survey so that they can let us know. Um, especially the people that are on the front lines with, with the patrons, um, during the day. And then, just like I, I talked about, um, with the camps, just ways to increase partnerships and gain more signups and completions. It's an amazing program, but we have to get people on board. And so, um, that's what I'm, I'm really hoping that I can do, I can do that, or we can do that. I don't know if I can do it by myself as a team, yeah. Yeah, so, uh, I think, any questions?
Yeah, um, is it possible, um, this might be a question for Joseph. If this, if we can, um, partner with the summer programs to make it like a part of curriculum?
I'm listening.
Yeah. No, like if this program, um, if we could partner with the summer programs, even the summer schools within Daly City to get it a part of the curriculum, like the reading?
We could certainly try. Certainly, I mean, you, you saw her, her outreach, she, she goes everywhere that will allow us to go. And, you know, it's interesting, just as an aside, not, not to deflect your question, but, you know, we struggle for why are the numbers down? And we may never know, but I will share this. Part of the Junior Giants Program in Daly City, which is a very popular free program through the summer, there's a reading component, the reading, reading round the bases log. And the kids track their reading throughout the eight or ten weeks of Junior Giants. And the goal is to complete the reading log, much like summer learning. And the reward is if everybody on the team completes the log, they get an invitation to play on the field at AT&T Park, and it's a big, wonderful experience. I've coached Junior Giants for the last six years. And the three previous years, my teams always completed the log, we always went to AT&T. And this year, it was like pulling teeth with these kids, reminding them every week, make sure you do your logs, make sure you do your logs. And of my entire team, only four kids, two of them were mine, uh, completed, completed, completed the reading. So we did not get that invitation. And, and so when I'm listening to the numbers, it's, it's frustrating because like, what, what worked the previous three years that we just can't seem to get these kids across the finish line? You know, they, they all, it wasn't like they didn't read at all, but they just didn't read quite enough to complete. And there's a lot of competition with this-
Exactly, I was just gonna say that. Here's books and here's technology, okay? And it keeps going, the gap is huge now at this point.
And it's funny, one, one kid on my team, she said, well, Coach, um, I watch a lot of TV. And, and before you say anything, I just wanna know, I watch a lot of foreign language TV with, with subtitles.
So that comes with some reading?
If I watched like a two-hour movie with subtitles, and I'm like, you know, you're reading technically, yeah. But that is the true marriage of technology and reading. So she was a great kid.
Oh, my goodness, hey, she's reading.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, uh, 'cause, um, how do you disseminate information, uh, to the, to community? So are you doing mails, or are you doing emails, or you do Facebooks? How do you disseminate information so that you could reach people?
Not me, no. Social media? Is it, yeah, we have, uh, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. Um, we have the newsletter. Electronic newsletter.
And then we also submit things to the city's Daily Wire, our daily newsletter as well.
Okay. Uh, 'cause the reason I'm asking is 'cause, uh, I do have, uh, internet radio.
Oh.
And probably I could help, you know, reaching out the community.
That'd be great.
And then, I don't know about the, um, compliance, you know, they, do, we need to get an approval for, uh, city to put in our internet radio? Because we do have a, uh, Facebook page. And at the same time, we do a live programs. And during the programs, we do have a simultaneous, you know, uh, put the, uh, the events. So we could help, you know, uh, disseminating information, so.
That's, thank you.
Um, I just wanna thank you for a really nice report and, uh, commend you on including the five-year statistics so we can see what the trends are.
Yeah.
You know, uh, even though I know you would wish for something that's going in the other direction, I have a real sense that you're committed to turning it around. And, uh, so I really appreciate the transparency that this report includes.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, this is, this is my passion, um, I don't know if you can tell.
We can tell.
But, um, I just, I wish there were more of me so I could, I could do more. But it's just not how it is. So, um, this is a learning time for me to see how to best use myself and, um, and use the resources I have to help me. So, um, I definitely wanna improve for next year, hopefully. Um, I'm starting to get more, um, partnerships with the schools. I think, um, that's something that I've done in the past where, in my last library. And just getting that connection with somebody at the school to like really advocate for the library is, um, something that's really been helpful. So I'm trying to do that, um, definitely with the middle schools right now, um, and one of the high schools. Um, and so it's just little by little, I hope that I can just get myself in there.
Thanks, Sarah, very much for the outreach. I think that's very important, outreach is really important. So your drive to be able to do that, um, is, um, is a big plus. And, um, welcome on board, I, I see your enthusiasm, so that will be helpful. And we, we met, so, um, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But, um, you just let us know as the, as the board how we can also support you on that end as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
We all have to work together, so you're not by yourself, and all hands on deck. So the more the merrier, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm actually gonna advocate for you at my daughter's school.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. Yeah, me on board.
We went there, yeah, we went there.
I think, you know, it's great, you know, the partnerships and the connection and you visiting all those locations. But if we can back you up in some way or form, I'm, we're happy to do that as well. And I'm glad, I was actually gonna ask when you all started evaluating the programs and then the next slide came. So, um, you know, once you kind of brainstorm in November, let us know. And we'll be happy to touch base with you as well.
Great, thank you so much. Any other questions for Sarah?
Well, you did excellent, excellent.
Good job, good job.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll move on with the, what's that? Oh, yeah, please do, yeah, you have a lot.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah. All right, um, so we'll move on to the trustees' report, and, um, we will head over to advocacy and get into our four pillars that we have, um, been talking about. And the first, um, agenda item on advocacy would be the creating awareness, which is, um, talking, the Talking Points bookmark. So we're getting back to our bookmark. Shayla.
Yes.
Thank you, Shayla, once again for editing, uh, for us. Do you wanna put your little two sons into there? Sorry, otherwise I'm happy to do so.
So based on, um, feedback, um, from members of this group, as well as, um, from Susan Brissenden-Smith and others on the DCPLA Board, um, we removed some things that might be maybe a little bit distracting and interfere with the message. And that left a little bit of space, so, um, at, at, I think it was Susan's suggestion, that nice how can you help has been expanded, um, to really emphasize the positive. And then also, um, there was a little bit of space. So as this is a, um, publication of the Library Board of Trustees, I included just the list of the, um, the board members. So, uh, I believe everyone did get a chance to see this except for our newest board member. So hopefully, this is the, the final review, this has, um, come back for review a number of times. So.
And I think we're on the same page that we kinda wanna move forward to like go live.
Publish.
Yeah, it looks good. I-
Everybody, are we good?
Sure. I don't know if it's necessary, but, you know, I make a motion that we accept this, uh, for distribution, uh, far and wide.
I'll second that motion.
Am I ready for me? Motion carries. Second.
Second.
Say a vote.
All in favor, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, we shall move forth with that. Go Shayla. Thank you, Shayla. Check.
Thank you.
All right, um, the next item is the communication library visits. So at our last, um, meeting, I'm gonna just kind of give an insight for Marcel. Our last meeting, I actually gave an assignment to each of the Board of Trustees to go out and visit one of the four libraries of their choice and, um, meet with the staff. Very casual meeting, just to get some input on, um, ideas, concerns that they have in their, in their branches. And also to get to know who our Board of Trustees are. Um, and so, um, Bill went to visit Westlake. Um, I did, um, Bayshore Library. Angela did John Daly. And Lynn, who's not here this evening, um, was to visit Ceremony. She didn't get a chance to, I visited Ceremony, but she actually got another, um, she got, got input from the patrons using the Ceremony Library as well as the Westlake Library. So she actually has a good report out, but she unfortunately, she's not here this evening, so. Um, and so what we're gonna do this evening is, um, just do a whip around each of the board members and just kind of, uh, give an update on your visits, um, to the library. Um, and we can start with Bill, do you wanna start?
Sure.
Okay.
So with a little, uh, planning with the library manager, I arranged a time to come by and meet with the library staff in a serial sort of fashion so that all of the essential functions of the library were being covered while we had a few people in the back, uh, to talk about a variety of issues. So I explained, uh, what the Board of Trustees was about, and then tried to generate some conversations, uh, from the staff in terms of, um, their perception of how things are going, uh, how the trustees can support them. And what really impressed me, the thing that I walked away with that I wanted to share tonight, were the stories that they were telling about what libraries do besides check out books and materials and provide access to computers. They're involved in a wide variety of social and community services that just pop up because libraries are seen as places to go for help. And I was thinking, as I was listening to some of these really touching stories, that, uh, and Karen was gonna talk to you, I think, Shayla, about this, whether we could capture some of, uh, the essence of some of those stories and go to, uh, city council meetings and share them with the council, uh, as part of public comment. Because I think that as informative as this card is, and, uh, the statistics as compelling as they are, don't tell the same story as somebody who went in with a real need and a librarian stopped and took the time to help him or her solve a really important pressing problem that wouldn't have been addressed if the library hadn't been there and if we didn't have the kind of staff that we've got. So my suggestion would be, if we can, let's capture some of those stories as Board of Trustee members, and let's tell other people what's going on. Because that's really where, uh, we're making a difference. And I think we're, hopefully, city council members would want to say, uh, okay, maybe we need to give them a little more support. Because it's so vital to the health and welfare of our community. But, uh, you know, libraries need more of a budget than they've been getting.
Yes, agreed, agreed. Thanks for sharing that, Bill. Good job. Uh, Angela?
Sure.
Would you like to go next?
Absolutely. Um, so I met with Jessica Diaz, um, the branch manager for both, uh, John Daly and Bayshore. And, um, it was, um, it was really great. I came there early in the morning and I, you know, I sat down with her. And she gave me some background about the John Daly Library. And I actually used to go to the John Daly Library all the time, um, at top of the hill. So, um, this place is like near and dear to my heart. But she gave me a little bit of history. Um, it's our oldest library, once known for its, um, children's section. It's obviously expanded a great deal. And, um, the great fact about the current John Daly Library is it actually has a very extensive Spanish book collection. So, um, that's really great. Um, she went over some day-to-day activities, um, the different levels of employees within the branches, the different activities that they do to keep, um, the community engaged. And it's no doubt, like from the page, the aide, the library assistant, to herself as the librarian, they all wear like so many different hats. And, um, you know, speaking of a story, I mean, I wanted to, um, kind of share this. So Jessica told me about a time where she had to be a watercolor expert. Meaning she had to facilitate an activity that she probably wasn't an expert on. But, um, to Bill's case, yeah, there's definitely some, you know, like, you have to have passion to, you know, all of a sudden learn something and then to facilitate it, right? Um, she told me another, um, pretty compelling story about a, um, Latino family who newly immigrated here and came to her for help. Obviously, um, she speaks Spanish. Um, and it was a father and his two sons, ages ten and twelve. They all did not know how to read at all. And, um, he came to her and, um, she led them to resources within the branch, but also connected them to, um, Project Read, an adult literacy service. So to Bill's point, you know, there is some personal emotional connection to do that. There's a social aspect of it, you know? So she also, you know, voiced some concerns regarding, and I think that this is where, um, it's gonna be continued topics of discussion for us as a board members. But we're gonna, you know, obviously, help her out, try to help her out regarding limited hours. Um, obviously with Bayshore and John Daly, um, she talked about the late fees policy. Concerned that the, um, about, um, you know, team members maybe not having like enough employees there from time to time, the circulation process, um, us keeping up with technology, right? We, we, that's obvious. And, um, volunteers, you know, like sometimes if they do have volunteers, the complexity, it's, it's, it's too complex of a job to say, hey, can you help out with this, right? They have to get acclimated prior to. And obviously the financial constraints. So, um, just seeing her, um, and I actually got to talk to, um, a few of the employees, her assistant Paul, who was really great. And, um, just seeing them was really like motivating as like a board member. So, yeah, I look forward to working alongside her to help make some improvements.
Nice. Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
Um, and so I'm next, um, and I actually saw, uh, Bayshore Library, and I also met with Jessica. And so our stories are kinda gonna be in line with each other, um, because she does manage both branches. Um, she's a wonderful person, she, um, is an advocate for the library, and she's very dedicated to her job. And it's just unfortunate when you sit and talk with her and hear the stories. And it's just unfortunate when you sit and talk with her and hear the stories, and specifically the Bayshore Library, just because it is only open two days a week. And her outcry to me was that it is so difficult to be able to reach out to the community just because of its location and where the residents live, and trying to communicate that, hey, we're here, the library's here to support you. It's just unfortunate we don't have enough staffing to accommodate the scheduling where kids can come in after school, or adults can bring in the kids after work because they shut down at six o'clock. And that's like the peak time when people are getting off of work and getting off of school and they can actually go into the library for a few hours and either read or do homework. And so, that really, that really gets her. It drives her to want to be able to do something. And because she's managing both the John Daly and the Bayshore, it's a lot on her plate and she's so torn because when she walks away from Bayshore, she, because her focus is there, then she has to turn away and then focus on the John Daly's operations. And really what it boils down to, I think, more so from the Westlake, more so with the John Daly, Bayshore, is the lack of funding to support more staff to be able to reach out to the patrons. It really boils down to the funding, the budgets of how we have our budgets for the libraries. I did also visit Ceremoni. I spoke to Lynn and I told her that I would follow up with Ceremoni because she wasn't able to. And I met with, actually at a roundtable. It was Shayla and Cole, Sarah, and Natalie was there, Josh. I think that was it, right, is that all of us, yeah? Which was a great experience. I asked them to just be pretty candid and share with me their concerns. As a board, as a board member, I wanted to hear what their concerns are. And it was great. Again, it all boils down to the funding. I mean, I wish I could just throw a bag of money on the table and say, you're good, now go forth. But I told them that, you know, we, we as the board are here because we want to show that we are trying to support you in the best way we can. And if we get your voices out, if we can get your voices to our council people, then maybe that is just the start of something, the start of something that can go forth in trying to establish a better understanding of how we can get more support for our libraries. It's, but right now, really, it is, it is all about the hours. We hear from patrons saying, you know, why aren't you guys open on Saturdays? And, you know, I go to Westlake on Saturdays, but there's no parking on Saturdays because everybody's home, you know? And so, Ceremoni has a big parking lot, why can't we have them open on Saturdays? We can, at least we can find parking there. So, you hear different stories from patrons, you know, not being open long enough. And so, it's frustrating. And me sitting on the board and hearing these kinds of things, I feel helpless. But this is the start of a new, and I think that us as being board members can work together to try and get something going. I don't know what that is, and I can't promise anything for sure, but I think moving forward is working together and continuing to be able to stay in communication with our staff and also the patrons. Hopefully, that will kind of lead us towards more positive outcomes in the future. So, with that said, I, Bill had mentioned to me in passing when we were at the book signing for Vanessa, that we should go forth and we should continue visiting our libraries. So, we can do a roundtable, whoever visited one can visit the next. And again, just to get your voice, yourself seen by the staff people, get them, let them know who you are, and, and to get more feedback from them. It may be regurgitating the same thing that we've heard from another person that's visited, but at least you're showing your face out to, to the individuals that are supporting our libraries, so that they can see that we are concerned about the issues and that we're not just behind this desk and, you know, giving out reports and that we are trying to make a difference. And hopefully, that can reach out to our council people. If you're watching, we need your help. I mean, we really do. I mean, this is, this is how we build a community. We have things going on in our community, ideas. But in order to sustain a good community, we need support like our libraries to help our patrons. Otherwise, they're not going to have any resources or outreach to help them and live in a, in a good community. We need that support.
Yeah, I agree. So, and what Bill said about what the library do, I think that's very important to give that information or for, to the people to understand what is the use of the library, right? Well, I mean, there's variety that we could use that library, right? Like what you said, using computer, pulling, you know, you know, books. So, I think for me, we have to emphasize of, to the people that, you know, the use of the library, that people can go there, right? And then as far as the concern of the parking, I think, yes, very, you know, very important too.
It is, yeah.
So, and then also, I think overall here, I see it's, I think it's a, you know, funding, it's a big issue here. So, I think we should, you know, do something about the funding because education, for me, it's very important that, you know, kids need support, you know?
I agree, I agree. Okay, on that, now, does anybody have any, any input on that, anyone input?
Shayla, I was just wondering what the conversation was like with Karen in terms of sharing vignettes from the libraries.
We can work with all of the managers to try and put something together, but it will be pretty brief. I mean, there are things that, that, you know, we remember and have an impact on us as well as, and, you know, it's very meaningful for us when we touch somebody's life. But it will not be something that I think we would be able to generate a regular report of, you know, special cases in the library, if that's what you're asking, or?
Well, ideally, the person who had the encounter, you know, with a community member, patron, would talk about what happened, what the need was and how it was addressed. But I wouldn't expect our already stretched library staff to attend city council meetings or take any more time out of, I should say, spend personal time doing that kind of thing. That's why I was thinking that the trustees could be a conduit from the library where the service is being delivered to people who make decisions about whether or not those services are going to be available to a greater or lesser degree. And, you know, I guess what I'm thinking at this point is that as we meet with the library staff, that as those things come up, just as Angela talked in more detail than I did, we take some notes so that we can tell that story again and provide as much richness and as much detail as possible. And maybe even include it as part of our trustees' agenda. You know, as reports from the libraries, or something like that, or tales from the libraries. But, you know, try and find ways to make the council members more aware of the breadth and depth of library services, given the very constrained resources that they have to work with.
I think it's a brilliant idea. And part of it is making sure that the stories are heard.
Exactly.
And if, if it's a room with not a lot of people, the story obviously is not going to reach as many ears. I would think it would be a perfect thing for a video, an informational, just little vignette.
I was going to say, doing like a video.
And then we can put it on, on social media, we can put it on the city's website and, and other places where hopefully, it would reach more people. And then it's got a little bit of a shelf life too, because, you know, you come to a council meeting, if like one shot, a video, it can live, you know, forever.
I was thinking about that.
Now, now how we get from, from that concept to a finished product, it's going to require some work. But I think, listening to you talk this evening, I was thinking it would make such a compelling video to have. You know, not long drawn out stories, but several stories from several different, you know, whether it's staff or the actual patrons who benefited from, from an experience. I think it's an awesome idea. But I, and I think the more we can tell the story and raise awareness, the better chance we have of making some progress.
Well, you know, I'm wondering if we have any film or TV programs, academic programs at San Francisco State, at our community colleges, or anything like that, where this could be a semester project, where students working with the libraries or with the Board of Trustees might record some of these stories?
We have a very talented young technician working tonight. We also, on the recreation side, there's a contract videographer.
Oh, really?
He does very professional work and, you know, I'm sure we can find a way to share that resource.
I just didn't assume we.
And you're also right, Bill. No, that is true, because I actually did a, I did a video kind of similar to this where we interviewed faculty members, women in science. And there was a student who wanted to do that for their master thesis project. So, they did that for us. So, yes, so we, there are, I think there are resources out there that definitely would, would work.
But I, I would like to see, if we can do this once, perhaps consider doing it either quarterly or three times a year, so that we've always got fresh stories and it's coming back and it's new. And one reinforces the other, it's not just a one-shot deal that gets stale over time.
Okay, we can look into that, yeah? Quarterly or something like, update, in sorts. Okay, we can look into that. Anybody need to add anything to that?
Yeah. So, when I visited the branch, obviously, the bank, like, I'm in banking, right? And we have a branch, and I, the business is run actually very similar. The page is the teller, they have us, like, the assistant manager, right? And then they have the librarian, which would be like the branch manager. And I'm just piggybacking off of Bill's point. A lot of what we do in the bank, we tell, we give a lot of recognition and we tell a lot of success stories. Now, success story is not derived from reports or numbers, like what we've been doing, but actually life-changing things, right? Because just like, just like the bank, right, you kind of need a walk-in bank. I'm a big advocate of that. I know there's a lot of things online, there's, you know, mobile banking. But people actually need to talk to people. And then on the other end, those people actually need to get recognized because it's their passion. And in order for them to fulfill their passion, continue doing a great job, they need recognition. So, you know, I, spot on, spot on, Bill. I think we definitely have something going here. So, I'm excited about that.
All right. Marcel, you want to put anything on that? You guys just talked.
A lot going on.
So much things going on.
I know, I know, I know. Okay, all right. Okay, well, we'll work on that one and we'll move forward. Okay. Thanks, everybody, for sharing of your visits to the library. We'll continue to do that and we'll put that on the agenda for next time. Community involvement. I know Angela, we, you had talked about putting this on the agenda for this meeting, but we hadn't had any discussion about this, so I wasn't sure if we wanted to put this on the next agenda for next time around, or did you have any input for now?
Sure. Yeah, no, as a part, you know, as being board members, I think communication and advocating for the libraries is very important. And I think that, you know, we need to be active members in the community. So, if, that's the only way we're going to reach people through our, our own engagement with our own city. So, periodically, it would be nice if, you know, for example, we have the Cars in Colma. Crazy About Cars. It would be nice if we could get one of us to attend as the face for the library. We had the Love Not Hate event, and I got an email and, and I said, okay. And then I think we all discussed like, oh, you know, I can't make it or I can't. So, you know, I showed up for that and that was a great event, a ton of people, a lot of cultural enrichment. So, I think periodically, it's important for us to kind of show face and, you know, be engaged in these types of activities that the community has. So, that's basically what the community involvement focus was.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks. You add anything to that, Bill, or Marcel? All right. Okay, so we're going to move on to the DCP La report. The board meeting was actually held on August 28th at the Ceremoni Library Community Room. And Bill actually went on my behalf because I was not able to attend. And so, I don't know if you want to have a report out for the meeting?
Sure. I'll try and make it fairly brief.
Thanks, Bill.
So, we did meet in the Ceremoni Library Community Room. After the minutes and the financial statements were approved, there was a search committee report to replace Susan Brizden and Smith. Tom, Adrian, and Pauline are the members of that committee. Motion was made to authorize the committee to interview a candidate, an applicant, that seemed very promising, to develop a transition schedule that ideally would have this person starting in October and to make an offer. So, that's moving ahead. Next item was the Events Committee. Crazy About Cars in Colma, here's a small flyer, they have larger posters. Jane, Pauline, and Ray are leading this effort. Tom, Nouris, and Pauline were going to attend and in fact, did attend the city council meeting on September 10th to promote the event. They did a really great job. And then, one of the other items on the Events Committee agenda was to review the author talk by Vanessa Garcia from Seven Mile House, which was very successful and some of us were able to attend. Communications Committee made a brief report about the website status. That's still in limbo right now. There's some loss of expertise and continuity, but they know that's very important and are continuing to work on it. Membership Committee, Pauline is the interim chair. She wants to find somebody who will take that over and give it the time and attention it requires. The focus is on the rejuvenation of the committee with the new chair and new members. There was also a discussion about adopting a new process for membership renewal where everyone in January would be renewed in January, except for those who joined in the last quarter of the year. So, there's less ambiguity about whether or not your membership is valid or not. Finally, the Executive Directors Report. Susan talked about insurance, workman's comp, or workers' compensation, general liability, and Directors and Officers Insurance has been renewed. Grant application status at, through the town of Colma and Seton Hospital. There was nothing new to report. The decisions will be made sometime this month. And hopefully, we'll know at the next DCP La meeting whether or not those grant applications have been approved or not. The person who's been running a QuickBooks program to maintain the accounts for DCP La is going to resign at the end of the year, so they're looking for a person to replace.
Everyone's leaving.
Him or her. They also discussed the Project Read Trivia Challenge sponsorship. Cost for a team is $900. Tom, Mike, and Tricia were mentioned as a fantastic team from last year. And I'm sure that there's thought of, you know, re, getting that team to come back and represent us again. And then finally, the, and I'm drawing a blank on this, KJS Author Talk? KJS, does that ring a bell with anybody? In any case, there's going to be an Author, Author Talk on Saturday, December 8th. The title of the book is Undaunted. And the thought was that it would be an event.
Oh, maybe that's Jackie Spear.
Oh, that is it.
That is Jackie Spear, yeah. That is Jackie Spear, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Thank you very much.
There you go.
And that, uh, that would be a nice event to introduce the new um, executive director to the community. Uh, finally, there was a library report uh, between Shayla and me and the bookmark was discussed. Uh, there was some input from DCPLA which resulted in what we approved tonight. And the next meeting of the DCPLA Board will be Tuesday, September twenty-fifth.
Richard might have to go in for me as well, because I will be traveling still. I will let you know.
Okay.
Thank you so much for attending that meeting on my behalf.
My pleasure.
Okay, uh, so moving forward, um, we've got the report on that. Announcements and communications. Um, so I just wanna reiterate again, the DCPLA, DCPLA presents Crazy About Cars in Colma um, is on Sa- Saturday, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, from twelve to four at the Colma Community Center. And as um, Angela had mentioned, um, I'm hoping that either one or two of us can go. Unfortunately, I'll be traveling, so if somebody can go, that'd be awesome to get us represented out there. Um, it's supposed to be a really fun event, um, and uh, they're very excited about it. So, um, looking forward to hearing about it when I get back. Um, and any other communication announcements? Somebody even get anything else? Oh, yes, sorry. I'll use this one. I didn't even wanna read this one, sorry. Uh, Filipino-American History Month Celebration. Casaya, I'm sorry.
Casaya.
Casahayan, there you go, Marcel, thank you. Sadali City, Saturday, October thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from eleven to four at the March Bank Park. Um, and they said that there's parking available at the DC Station Garage, um, which is on, uh, Junipero Sierra Boulevard. And if, for more information about this event, you can call the number at six five zero nine nine one eight zero zero one. And, oh, Jocelyn Enriquez is gonna be there with Ruby Ibarra.
Hmm.
Uh, and there's gonna be entertainment, food trucks, a beer garden, vendors, arts and crafts and activities. And a lot of sponsors um, are heading this, so please attend, uh, Saturday, October thirteenth.
Not nearly as major as that. Um, we have for Hispanic Heritage Month, um, a special guest puppeteer coming in to do um, a Mexican fairy tale. Rabbit and Coyote are friends.
Okay, that's awesome.
So that is actually, um, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow evening at six P M. at the John Daly Library. And then yeah, I think he's, he's very good, so I'm looking forward to it. Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Um, definitely a good family, family thing to attend.
Yes, I agree.
And then um, next month for um, Filipino-American Heritage Month or History Month, excuse me.
Mayan.
We have um, a special guest coming in. Um, this is, um, I think it would be fine for children, but it's definitely also gonna be great for adults. Um, but he's going to, he's a, a calligrapher. He, he works in the um, ancient pre-Teguag script. And he's going to um, do a workshop on the history of that, the significance, and also um, kind of demonstrate his artwork and it's gonna have a hands-on component as well. We're very excited. And that one's gonna be um, Monday, October eighth at six P M. at the Ceramonti Library.
Nice, okay. Thanks, Shayla.
Thank you.
All right, so agenda building items for next meeting. So we talked about um, continuing our library visits, um, with reporting out, so we will continue to put that on the agenda. Um, shall we decide who is going to which library? Uh, right now, you wanna do that now? You wanna decide which one you're visiting?
Yeah, you're good at delegating and sending out a site. Say, you know, Bill goes to X and
Well, it's up to you. Bill, would you like to go to Ceremony this time?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll have Bill go to Ceremony. I can go to John Daly this time.
And I'd love to go to Wesley.
Okay. And Marcel, do you wanna visit?
Marcel is gonna go to all of them.
All of them.
All of them at one time.
Sure.
No, he's, you're, he's gonna actually tour you around the library, so you're gonna see all of them.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I'll put your name on there. And then I'll put Lynn down, but I'll check in with her and have her do um, Bay Shore.
Okay.
But I will check in with her and check her schedule. Okay, um, what else do we have on the agenda for next meeting? Community involvement, do you wanna still continue to put that? Well, we're gonna put the four pillars still on there.
Okay.
Um,
I'll just list the
We'll just list them for now, yeah. That'd be great. And we can talk about it, I guess, we don't have the specifics on it, we'll just con- continue working on it as we meet. Anything else? But that's so late. Did? Good? I think we're good.
Yeah.
Bill, did you have anything else you wanted to put for um, the next meeting?
No, no, I can't think of anything offhand. I did want to uh, say I really like these pins. Thank you very much. Very nice.
How come I didn't get one? Just kidding.
And I will say, no city funds were expended in this gift.
All right, on that note, I will adjourn the meeting.